So you're telling me that they're not being trained, right?
Well, and then let's get here, it's the head lifeguard position.
Well, no, but I thought we had a full-time-
It should always be the pool, not up in the workout room where it's at your own risk and at your own-
Well, I thought we had a full-time health person.
Oh, no. They tried to change that position and hire for somebody that was an aquatics slash wellness director when it was open, and there were no takers. We spent thousands of dollars advertising for it and no one ever was hired for the position. What we have is a facility director, an aquatics director, and a building and grounds maintenance full-time. Those are our three full-time employees. They oversee the lifeguards and the scheduling of the pool and the operation. And they also serve as a lifeguard when we get-
I was gonna say, which is seven to ten, he's pretty good with life guards.
So slide dispatch in the summertime and lifeguards are all kind of under that. And he is forty hours a week and we're eleven hours a day, seven days in a row. So that leaves thirty-three hours of that position being filled by- And I'm not arguing with you or saying I agree or disagree. This is up to you guys. This is the hard stuff. It's why you get paid the big bucks, but just to-
Well, I guess it'd really be nice to know when their busy hours really are, because I can't-
Well, it varies.
I can't imagine-
And right now, we're on a phase two opening where there is-
Yes, but I'm saying, they're not busy from six AM like they are at four PM. I mean, it'd be nice to know when they truly need their help. Because you can't tell me that all day, when you drive by there and there's no one there at eight o'clock in the morning, you can't tell me that they need all this help at that time.
I go by there every morning and drop the passenger off. There's people there.
I'm saying there isn't nobody there, but it's not like it's in the afternoon.
She doesn't keep staff on hand when there's not a need. She does an excellent job, and that's why it's so hard to estimate what they need for salaries and wages for their part-time staff. Because when they're not busy, if they don't need people, they don't have them. But what if a bus with thirty people comes in and you let all your lifeguards go?
Well, normally, buses will call you and tell you they're coming.
Not always.
That's true. Now, whether they get somebody there or not, okay, I want to go with what Kate said. You've got a lot of kids who hire on them, and then they go off to school. As far as my job, what I do, okay, I would rather have an adult there. They have responsibility, they have work ethic, they have experience, knowing what they're doing. And the main thing is, if you're going to offer them all these benefits, then they're going to stay for those benefits. Now, that's just my take on it. I mean, you know, if they love what they do, that's even, you know, that's added plus to it. But, and again, what's, I mean, I look at the other thing too, and I think, well, the hot tub, the hot sauna, the wet sauna. You're still sweating, so which one do you really need? Hey, just, you know, devil, devil that idea.
Yeah, people like both, but I hear right. This is great discussion. Do I leave it in? Do I take it out?
Well, I still go back on that, because people try to use them and nobody knew how to operate it. So I'm guessing some of it's not being trained down there properly.
Yeah, and I guess where she, she's talking about when they go up into the fitness area using fitness equipment. We don't have anybody trained to tell people how to do that. We don't have a fitness instructor around. No, they absolutely shouldn't be up there as to like, this position would-
Now, they have their own place to be and their own position. I taught martial arts in there for a while, and I'm not going to have a lifeguard come up there and take it over my classes.
Well, and they're not going to leave. They shouldn't leave, because I-
Exactly. If they have it, it's next point in the spot. You stay where you're at.
Well, you know, it'd also be nice to know how well utilized the health equipment is to see if team were worth keeping.
I think it's very well utilized, but Chris can share numbers with you about members that-
John, though, they may have a record of that.
I don't know if they split out, though, who is using the exercise equipment since it's all up together. But she probably give you a good idea on how many people are up in there.
Well, okay, well, she has license, I think.
Dude, they don't just have one lif- they have two lifeguards on at a time, right?
She has one.
Yeah, so-
Anyway, depends on the day and the-
Right, so that full-time person is actually kind of the floater person that is, would be taking care of this and that and covering the breaks of the lifeguard, but they would be the first, the go-to person. If someone had a question upstairs, they would be the one that would have the information that was needed because they're the full-time person. So they might be shifting around the building, which is what we probably should be doing as a supervising position. But then there's also the second person who's the lifeguard, being the lifeguard. So it's not people, they're not, not unguarded.
Yeah, cool. I was thinking if there should be two lifeguards, then the minimum fall would go. I won't agree to that, but I'm only more personal.
Anybody we haven't heard from yet? The ones to weigh in?
Well, she put one job, she put-
Yeah, well, and I'm showing you where we can and where we can't, so let's talk about it.
I'm kind of down the middle. I agree with Bob that we do need the employee, that they're trying to write on minimum. And you hate to see that when you're trying to run an operation. People don't, don't think visitors don't perceive that and don't recognize that. Uh, but the other as well is, the twenty-year-old hot tubs now, and those things are absolutely hard. Need that really hard. But you also need the staff to help run things. So I, I'm like, I can go either way.
I, I can tell you, if you don't approve this year, they're going to ask for it again. Um, it's definitely, I think that we've all identified that need is there. We just have a problem with the dollars not being there, so that's the tough part.
And how are you going to show revenue this year, assuming because of the COVID that's taken so much away, that phase in for, for being in the old tub? So there're not going to be one for you, or there're not going to be any before. And that revenue's just not there, so you can't rely on those figures for this year. You can only hope for next year.
Right.
You know, as far as having this full-time employee, I go up to VA every day dropping bedbugs off of my house. There's often there, and they've contracted, um, the COVID security for two years. They put a quantum of building out, their air conditioning in for those guards. So you're looking at quite possibly two years if these vaccines don't take. If you're going to hire a full-time employee, we're looking at two years if the COVID's still beating around. Yeah, you're going to, you're going to lose money. That's just my, my, my way of looking at it.
It sounds like a carrying consensus is maybe this isn't the right year to add the full-time employee? Or am I getting the feel of the room wrong?
Well, I'd rather spend the money on equipment and maintenance personally, but that's just me.
Need to speed in, think about it. Let me throw something out. You know, the, I agree, the hot tubs, the work on the facility needs to be done, or we're going to- Chris has made, I think, an excellent case. She's done what a department head should. She's made a case for the staff she needs. We don't have the dollars to comfortably support that. Would we be willing mid-year, if she comes back and presents us with more information that this ain't working without this position? Would we be willing to, if this, I'm confused, I don't know the right words to do a sub?
Uh, and you're saying mid-year 2021, after we have an idea of what next year's going to look like and the impact? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, if sometime in the future-
You can always-
And we realize that-
And then read the rules of supplement.
Yeah, even if-
Especially-
Or how about if we have the year, after we see what's the rest of the year is done?
We may have to, uh, provide more subsidy funds to Evans' one, but it ain't working without that additional full-time person. If we have to suck it up and grab a hold of reality and spend the extra funds, but listen to our department head, uh, with the facts at hand. I think we got to be willing to do that. If we're willing to do that, then I'm, I'm willing to get off at this point.
Explain to me why the employees need a key card for that?
Um, probably because it's easier to re-go than re-keep. And they, the way they go through staff, that, that, I don't know for sure.
They don't turn their keys in?
What?
They don't turn their keys in?
Well, we've had police have to go to previous employees that have just stopped showing, "I'm sorry," but that's the truth.
Well, that's just, that's just life. That's how normal business works. So I, I guess, I kind of agree with that too. Really, do we, do we really need to spend that much on a key card system?
Maybe we can take that out this year too. We got a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars of work, and we'll take away twenty-four-five if we take away the employee.
If we take that out, I'll agree with what Bill said.
John, you know, an estimate of the employee door pass key entry, how much of that twenty-five, there's nine left?
I'm not a grandpa.
So the health club upgrade with new doors, that's only two thousand?
Eighteen thousand, not the, the-
Oh, so health club updates with new doors, staff's entry, the hot tubs, that's all included in the sixteen?
Eighteen.
Eighteen?
Those apples.
Numbers are hard. Okay, so you think the door pass entry is seven K?
Yeah.
So if we take that out and the part-time employee goes with the expectation that, um, we'll relook at it at the end of this year and mid-next year, compare revenues?
I think mid-next or mid-of-this year, I know they're not making up to do that.
Well, we heard of something from the South Dakota Department of Tours called the shoulder season, and we're really counting on it this year for the punch. But you're right, but we can take a look at it. Does that some, okay?
I need to add one comment to talk about the middle of next year, depending on what you mean. There's only guaranteed that four of you are going to be in that discussion on the middle of next year.
There was only four people here previous to this year.
Hopefully, everybody is, but to say we will have that discussion again in the middle of next year, there's only guaranteed that four people are going to be in the week.
Well, instead of saying the middle of next year, I think we need to listen to Chris. And if she comes back with half her hair pulled out, saying, "I'm dying in a pile here. I need help." We need to listen, and she's already, I think, come to us with a need. But we need to listen to that department head, and if she comes back whenever with a critical concern, we need to listen to her at that point and see if we can take action at that point, regardless of when that is.
Wes?
Okay, the state uses what they call a lead employee. So you have one employee that's not really management, but they give them the title as lead employee. So that lead employee kind of takes a leadership role. Why couldn't we incorporate something like that and just give one employee that's showing fortitude, aptitude, whatever, give them a little bit of a raise and let that person become the night watchman?
We currently have the head lifeguard position, which makes more than just the lifeguard position, but it's part-time. And so her request was to eliminate that part-time position, make it full-time. And so we do kind of have that arrangement right now with the head lifeguard position as part-time employee.
Did you say when the department head's pulling their hair out, meaning that Philly Barrow came this last summer, one of the employees, and they said, "No, look how busy they were"?
We're actually asked to increase a position half-time, but then you have the benefits to go with that.
Yep, that's why, if we take them out, it's twenty-four thousand five hundred that we save. If, but the whole position costs forty-three thousand, so you're right, that, that is-
So we're only increasing a half of the position in part-time?
All of our part-time positions are mine. Well, we don't use the word permanent anymore because it indicates that we'll never get rid of them, but, yep.
So could we add another part-time position?
We have. She has part-time positions, what she's, and she has an option. And maybe what she needs to do now, we go back to her and talk about maybe rescheduling the way the full-time people work to get us through this, maybe that's an option. Because we wouldn't be adding any person, because we'd just be adding benefits, maybe real-time, giving a little more authority.
How many hours is part-time?
Anything under forty hours a week. She manages her part-time staff, and they have varying hours based on her needs.
Maybe under forty hours, so they can work up to closer to forty hours, still with her part-time?
Yeah, she, well, she has an amount for a budget that she tries to work within, and then she uses them, the hours that she needs them, the part-time staff.
You're working your staff.
Did I, did I understand correctly what you just said? We're not, you're not adding a body here. You're just adding, you're just adding a change in title.
And, and point five FTE.
Basically, the position's still just going to give them a title, like you were saying, Wes.
They're probably already just working shy of full-time, not over-dying.
I don't think it's very good.
The benefits she's going to be right on, having a full-time-
She'll get, they'll get personal goods, state retirement, everything else.
And benefits and retirement.
She's not got any more personnel.
In addition to salaries and wages, only ten thousand.
Yep.
Yep.
But she's not got any more bodies.
Wes, just find that.
All right, so it sounds like we had a consensus to remove the full-time position and the seven K for the employee door pass. Is that right?
That's before we move on.
Okay, can I start believing? Can I start believing, or what?
No, you can go ahead and believe. What I'm asking, counselor, is what I've heard from you, if you're willing to revisit this? Your concern about the dollar value, and you folks want to revisit it. So can I get a commitment from you that we'll go back to Chris? And say that February, March, or April, the council is expecting another presentation from you to demonstrate why you still feel this position is needed? So that this council is in a position to say, okay, you convinced us, or no, we still want to hold to?
I feel April would probably be your best time, right, less than a year, uh, from January one, for four months, to see how things are working there. Plus, we would get a better feel of this last hour, on the hour of that.
Where will the money come from?
I think June, be that way, part of summer's there, and right before, if we, the four do get off or stay on, make a commitment to June.
Where will the money come from?
Well, that's what we'd have to look at, where they're at year-to-date revenue. We'd have that same conversation, then where does the money come from?
Can I get that to you, that whatever funds you-
Yeah, but you're budgeting money now.
You designate, uh-
We're not budgeting money and holding something back to pay in April.
What, what are you willing to-
No, it would just be a supplement again. I'm, I'm willing to commit to that, I guess. I mean, because if the rest of this year crashes and it, it becomes even worse, I mean-
COVID hits, I guess. We can, we can say that we're looking at it, but it comes right down to the same information that we're asking for now. We're wanting to see how things are going, how travel, you know, our tourists, since they know. We're going to, really, we could all commit to that, but we're going to be asking the same questions, okay?
That's fine.
And I don't see there's anything wrong with that, because we're going to look at what we have the rest of this year. Also, we're willing to see what, what's coming. If the police know the, the tourist information that we get, we do this really well. So, um, is there April? April's one? I'm willing to revisit this at any point in time, really, just long as we see what kind of season we have coming, what kind of increase we have in visitors, and where we're actually at financially. And I guess the other thing that I'm interested in is, do we have an enterprise operation that is struggling operationally because we haven't staffed it properly?
You can't say it's the staff that's causing that thing not to-
No, but because of the lack of the full-time staff that she's asked for, is that causing problems for her?
You'll have retention issues because they're overworked and, and, you know, they're being worked overtime, getting hard time.
The person that's working works thirty-nine hours, not has personally wanted to hire a full-time. So I was like, I think it'd be overworked. It's the same employee they have.
He's probably doing more than forty, but he's not getting any benefits for it. So retaining that, retaining that person who's working his butt off for us is, is important to retain those people that are loyal and want to stay, but if they're, and even Chris, Chris might get burnt out and not say, "We don't want to lose Chris."
There's no guarantee in any job in anywhere.
Well, I realize that, but you do have to support your staff.
And what, 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 thirty-four years?
That discussion isn't going to change the decision your folks have already made.
No.
You don't want to fund the additional position right now, but you're willing to revisit in April.
I'd just put in a later date.
Whether something has changed. You're making that commitment to Chris, but she needs to present to you again, uh, her, her need for the, for the position.
Yeah, and tell us what her overtime hours are.
Sure, great. And I, I, I totally agree that a little bit more information on this particular question needs to be answered.
And a little bit more money as we figure out what's happening this year, everything's different, what next year might look like. So I've removed both seven thousand dollars from equipment repairs and the twenty-four-five for the part-time, and we have that subsidy down from one fifty-four, three forty-five to one twenty-two, eight fifty.
Okay, great. Are you willing to make that commitment?
Yeah.
Everybody else?
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, we made a little progress.
So, so, or?
What was the new total, Misty?
That's thirty-one thousand dollars.
I can't hear.
The new total for Evans' Plunge is seven hundred ninety-eight thousand, one hundred dollars.
But, so shaving the subsidy down?
Yep, the subsidy's now down to one twenty-two, eight fifty.
I have a couple more questions on Evans' Plunge.
Absolutely.
The publishing, you have twenty-five thousand, you print some of that, right?
Yeah. Her publishing is her advertising and marketing.
She writes along, what's the Plunge resident, right along with Chamber, bars, and that publishing?
Um, some, not all.
Some, some, with the golf course, and Black Hills Badlands, and they have billboards on the highway that they make for.
There's more to it.
Oh, yeah, I, I know the- Paper buyer. I actually went through mine one time before, I was picking up the side carrier.
Monthly, she pays yes go, it's a split billboard with the, um, golf course. She's Black Hills and Badlands Tourism. She's partnered with that. She does some stuff with the Chamber. The Herald Evergreen Media, which is the Black Hills visitor guide, um, the Herald Azimex and Activities Guide. Both pages publishing. Another billboard lease, another billboard lease, radio ads, photo gallery. Chamber is giving some ideas, uh, Hot Spots History Magazine, it's an advertising. She probably is the strongest, uh, in her managing the marketing, but they're giving maybe a bank of hundred dollars.
And maybe you can't answer this, but does the plunge and the golf course, do they ever kind of tie together?
A lot.
Okay, well, I was thinking before we work together, we, that's what we encourage them to, co-op their dollars and get the most bang for their buck, but I just wanted to make sure that was still happening.
Yep, exactly. So were you recommending any decreases to that, or just asking?
Oh, no, I was just asking because, um, it doesn't seem like it's actually increased from the year before. Building repair maintenance, that was part of that.
Yes.
And then, um, what did we do during maintenance, that was also part of that?
Uh, no, we didn't decrease that space three of each back of these, uh, the, the-
So nothing that we took out of there, not hurt it in any way in part of maintenance and advertising?
Not yet. Any other questions on the plunge? All right, come on, let's move to the gorge. Yep, and the golf course has two departments. So golf course is six-twenty, that's the fund number. And then the department four-five-one-three-zero is the pro shop, and four-five-one-two-zero is Jason's part of the actual course. Why they're separate, they have the same revenue, it's just one revenue account that funds them both. But this is the way it was set up when I got here, and this is the way it's been. So we're going to go through the pro shop.
I asked you this on that, because you said, is it easier for you to talk to them later?
It's fine. It's fine, it's the way it's set up.
Jason's part of the course.
Uh, Jason would be the managing of the actual course, and Kathy does the managing of the pro shop. So he manages all the employees that function as operating.
You know that, I just, we know there's-
Two departments.
You said three different.
No, two. There's one rep, one source of revenue for the whole golf course, and then they have two departments. So we're going to start with the pro shop. Just like the plunge, the estimate of salaries and wages for their part-time employees is difficult, but we have process, um, so we estimate as best we can. They're not adding anything. These are standard increases we're estimating for. Payroll taxes, tied to the dollar amount that we put in the first, um, category. Retirement is only for Kathy, our full-time employee. She's the only full-time employee in the pro shop. Workman's compensation, group insurance, unemployment, our property and liability insurance with SVPAA. Her professional services include merchant processing, night security, and Black Hills technology. She asked me to add an expense code for licenses. I did. It's her food service and malt beverage license. It's four hundred dollars. I took this amount, um, from what she paid last year. It's pretty consistent. Vehicle repairs, we are in year three, four, uh, five-year lease for new parts, but they still do need to fix flats. Um, most other mechanics is covered by our lease agreement. Building repairs, it's hard to know. Uh, she specifically said she wouldn't ask for a lot as long as she had support from the council if something unexpected happened in her building and needed repaired. Equipment repairs, same thing, a thousand dollars. She has supplies of three thousand. That, where's she at year-to-date on supplies?
Eleven sixty.
I'm sorry?
Eleven sixty.
Okay, so I thought maybe that was a little high, but it sounds like she's, she's used almost half year-to-date. Material and equipment for resale, although you can take any one of these next five items down, that's going to affect your bill of year, because these are all resale items. So we have eight thousand, we have wine at five hundred.
I was, I was wondering where you asked, but twenty-twenty, she only budgeted eighteen hundred dollars this year.
Right.
She's only used eleven hundred, so that's pretty wild once you hear it.
Yeah, and she's going to exceed eighteen hundred this year. She wasn't sure why she budgeted so little, and I don't remember either compared to your, to the year before. We could maybe lower that a little bit. That's definitely something we will take a look at. She can manage those dollars, but, uh, when we talked about supplies of thirty-three, she said that she didn't budget enough. Beer, other materials for resale. This clothing is clothing for resale, not honey, blue, or care. Janitorial supplies, just two thousand. Minor tools, five hundred. Landscap material, which is mulch oil and plants from the house, six hundred. Gas oil and diesel, that's fuel for the cars, twenty-two hundred. Food is an item for resale. She has two, I'm sorry, twenty thousand. Travel and conference, she does really do every traveling, she will hundred dollars. Telephone, thirteen hundred. Same thing with the cable there, not having to pay for it anymore.
Did we go back?
Yes, we did.
Um, in two thousand nineteen, the food was only thirteen thousand five hundred essentially. And then it went up to twenty thousand with budget, and she's only used fifty-eight hundred of that. And they've had a good year, so.
So twenty-nineteen is an actual amount. She did have twenty budgeted then too. Uh, it depends on the party she has, the food that she buys, and, yep, the tournament she has. So that's an item per resale. We could lower it, but if she doesn't have money, buy food and can't sell the food, that would increase straight. That's a great question.
So if she don't use all this, you really bracket them?
We don't transfer what they, that's what, what I was talking about, Evans' Plunge and the subsidy. We do the same thing for the golf- We don't transfer what they, that's what, when I was talking about Evans Plunge and the subsidy, we do the same thing for the golf course. We plan, but we do not transfer until November and we take a look at where they're at year-to-date for revenue and expenses and only transfer the amount of subsidy. Uh, see telephone and electricity, can't do much with those. Machinery and equipment, she has fifteen hundred dollars. And she never got me, did she give you John anything specific that she wanted for that, having, having budgeted that?
She did, I mean.
They, in twen- two thousand eighteen, we budgeted for the expense of carts, uh, lease. We are in payment for a five-year lease and we think about those numbers. Anything in the golf course after the conversation we had that we should be changing? I thought there were a couple.
I don't know, uh, machinery, equipment, it's one for fifty-nine, I didn't know what seemed to go wrong.
Not especially in the last two, you know, this year.
I guess what's the water for she's got, she's, she'll have nothing down this year, but.
No, that's, so we, after you left, we got some guidance from DLA and our auditors regarding internal water and sewer usage. Those are enterprise funds and generally accepted accounting principles require us to track and document even internal usage. We don't budget for it, but in our November supplemental appropriation ordinance, we go through and estimate water and sewer usage in all of the departments within the city. We fill it, so water and sewer gets revenue and then they do an operating transfer to all the places it's filled, so the net effect is zero, but we have some accounting entries. Doesn't affect cash, though, when we're budgeting, we don't put it in there, but when we have actual, we'll have numbers.
Can you just pay us though?
Yeah, well, we wash it. We pay ourselves something, give it back.
But it actually gives you a way to track what you're.
If some, yeah, if somebody wanted to leave the golf course, they, what does it take to run it? We left out, out of their water usage. A big piece of it, yeah.
Well, yeah, I was gonna say, if, if, we've never really kept track of the actual.
We do.
Dog, do, do we?
We do, wait till we get to Jason's and you'll see.
Okay.
The actual amounts for his, but we don't budget for it because it doesn't have any cash impact.
Sure.
So we got that fifteen hundred that we'll ask her about and they take out. Um, I don't know, do you have her, do you text her or not? Do you think she'd answer a text real quick so we can?
And my other thing I heard, yeah, you know, traditionally over in Southern, uh, the last, this year being the third year, we have not gone over fifteen thousand, we've been under fifteen thousand. Your question's for twenty. Traditionally, we're staying with oh fifteen, it doesn't make any sense to add another five thousand sitting there.
Is that the reason that large groups was a problem?
So would you like to see that reduced to fifteen or eighteen?
I would say bring down to fifteen or so.
I guess before we do it, which we ask her if she has any, do we know, do we have any big tournaments coming up? Do we have any?
Well, she has enough budget to do it this year. She does.
Okay, you're, yeah, you're right. No, I, no, I agree. I think that five probably shouldn't come on. Cause I had that check marked, but when you said, you know, if we don't give her the money, if she can't buy it to sell it, but looking at the history, you're right. I mean, it's, it's, she never exceeded that, so.
I don't, does it matter though?
It would matter for our subsidy amount.
But if she doesn't use.
If she doesn't use it, our subsidy will change.
Subsidy will change. But if we have a big year.
We have a shortage though. Even where the subsidy's coming from, we're trying to make a difference from the two-one-two five. We have cash applied there too, so.
Really, if something's offered or that we, for a big tournament or whatever, party or whatever, basically, if she needed to add it, expense money to turn around and resell, most likely we would agree to it.
And my only thought is, as far as leaving them alone, is South Dakota is getting potentially really popular because our governor hasn't shut us down. You know, there's a lot of places that are locked down and, and we're open and we may become real popular even in twenty-twenty-one and.
That's a good amount.
They bring clean money.
Clean, y'all.
Don't touch anything while they're here.
I, that's, that's the only thing I'm, I'm thinking is if we want to.
Further back than what we can see this week, like past eighteen, has she went, she was at twenty that tall?
That's fifteen. Fourteen and fifteen, she was closer to that twenty figure.
There was a couple of years where they had those state tournaments and stuff and that's probably what really drove it up.
Either a little teenage boy liked the beer.
Well, this is food, so.
Are there any more tournaments planned?
So we talked a little bit about supplies. Do we want to change that amount down at all or leave it at three? And then same with food.
If we could drop that one to twenty-five, please.
Oops.
The supplies.
From three thousand to twenty-five. Really doesn't, it's gonna be twenty-five dollars to twenty-five thousand. I can't give it, I got it. Um, I don't think that's a drastic cut, but anybody have any disagreements to drop in supplies, like five hundred? Still an increase of seven over last year.
Okay, man, now I don't know if this is just me not being able to stay in here or what, but so the advertising for the golf course and the advertising for Evans Plunge, they go together, does that mean that you watch, have it done, everybody with the golf course? Because I, I don't see it here.
It's on Jason's department, so we haven't gotten to that one yet. It's still golf course, but we'll get to that one next. Good question though, your, your. Good question. So far, we dropped five hundred from supplies and what did we decide on the food number? Looking back at the story.
Some of us decided fifteen and some of us decided forty.
I don't, I don't see any issue with dropping it five thousand. It's very common, she's never did it. And if she does come to us and needs the money, um, to show that, I could have an actual payment cut.
You know, I'm sure we will all agree with that.
Yep, and if she needs some money, Bob will write it out of his personal account.
Oh, I like that, fifteen it is.
Now you're saying.
Hell, you did.
I would say in twenty fourteen and fifteen, she did hit it, um, but since that time, she had fifteen or eighteen going on.
I've worked with her, I would felt good for you, but we can still add it in.
I'll get up to here.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, um, she needs a commercial vacuum cleaner, eight hundred dollars, that's the big way. Coffee pot and it is simple things like ice cream scoops, they.
Uh, that wouldn't be machinery, equipment and ice cream scoop would be, but commercial vacuum cleaner you said was eight hundred?
Yeah, the commercial vacuum cleaner for big, big guy, it's a pretty long term, that's a cheap one every year. And working with her in a, in a second, honestly, saying the floor here is good.
And that you clean.
And you're.
It's pretty.
You're seeing that.
It's pretty.
So that sounded like the only thing you rattled off that really falls in this machinery and equipment category.
Coffee pot, it did, but she said she's still have to work and she didn't call her alone.
Yeah, I think, feel like that's more like a supply.
Commercial coffee pot, like, uh, like a pot on the side. There's your supplies.
Yeah, I'm not sure that's.
And that could be included because you're only budgeting for, well, this year is eighteen hundred, three thousand in supplies. You're gonna make up that difference with the coffee pot.
We dropped it to twenty-five hundred.
Took twenty thousand, that's what I said, you're still gonna make it up to twenty-five hundred for your coffee pot.
Get me on the model, she can spend a thousand dollars for you to do that.
She has it. What's wrong with the one she has? It's big and it has. Um, so machinery and equipment, it looks like I can maybe drop that, uh, to eight hundred unless we have an amount for a coffee pot we want to add in there. And then I still could probably drop it a few hundred, right? I mean, I don't want a commercial coffee pot, I don't know like that.
It's a small coffee pot. It's called a carry.
Yeah, but late, late machinery, a thousand.
Okay.
Drop that five hundred of supplies, I don't think that would kill a G P O coffee pot there.
We did that. We dropped five thousand for food and we dropped five hundred from supplies. And then I just changed, um, machinery and equipment to a thousand, which gets our estimated expense for the pro shop piece of the golf course down to one ninety-eight, oh, five oh.
This, this is kind of a late question here, but do we still have like a friends of the golf course and friends of the Evans Plunge and people like that that donate money for different things or?
Um, we don't get a lot of donations from those groups.
Well, the friends have pretty much unfriended us.
Well, they said they're friends, not financial.
You ever golfed out there?
Yeah.
All right, so I went to the bottom of this, um, in Jason's budget, and this is where I have the projected revenue without the subsidy and the expenses and I changed Kathy's to one ninety-eight, oh, five zero, which brings their projected, um, profit loss. Brought, uh, loss down a little bit. Now we'll go through Jason's request and his expense part of the budget. On one sixty-seven, they are not, uh, looking to hire any additional employees. These will be the estimated increases to minimum wage and total adjustments. Payroll taxes, retirement, workers' comp.
The increases on the salaries and wages, is that just a normal progression year to year?
Um, we estimate and.
I mean, that's seventeen thousand dollars more than what was budgeted for twenty-twenty.
Yeah, he shaved off, so he had a bigger projection in twenty-twenty also and we took an amount off there because of where he was at year-to-date. So we can do that again with this one. We are trying to project part-time people that don't follow a set schedule. So last year, he had a larger amount requested and we decreased during budget talks, the amount.
Is he anticipating having more help?
He's not. No, he plans on carrying the same amount of help as he has.
Does he find out on day one?
Uh, there are increases both for his, um, full-time staff and the thirty cent estimate increase for the minimum wage that we won't know about until.
Is that gonna count for seventeen thousand dollars?
Again, this is, we're as, this is the way we're estimating it. We've come up with this calculation. He had a higher estimate last year, but where he was at year-to-date, we shaved along and we could do that again.
It's like, two years ago, he was at one forty, cause he was at one forty-two and a half. And this year today, half year in, he'll come up to one forty-two, so.
He is at one forty-two half the year already?
Well, no, he's at seventy-one, nine, seventy-two.
So it do.
So he'll be, so then you just add your wage increase on top of that for this year.
And we, we could.
And it would come up to one sixty-seven.
I would probably put a little extra on there since we know that they're gonna pay more, but we didn't put any amount there. So if you'd like to decrease that projection, um, you said this year we're at about a hundred and forty-two again.
Yeah, we need one forty.
If you decrease that projection, you're decreasing some of the others too, though.
Uh, no, these, this in Evans Plunge, the part-time people, we're just estimating, but with our full-time employees, we're projecting the right amount.
So social security and none of that will change?
No, I will decrease those as well. If I change the amount of salaries and wages, the other ones are a percentage of that.
Right.
Retirement won't change at all, but the payroll taxes will change and unemployment will change.
Maybe he was killing himself a race.
So if you said, if we said like one forty-five, how much, how much of that would require to be the percentage of wage increases we need to a lot more? For the cost of living, how much more do we need for cost of living raises above that? Is that the one that you said's?
Not sure I'm following. So we have for the clubhouse projection, or, no, for the golf course, for the full-time employees, that just includes two people. Um, we have total salaries and wages estimates of ninety-three thousand. That doesn't include the payroll taxes or retirement with those, it's a hundred and five five.
So what would they be with the cost of living?
That is, with that included for the full-time people.
But we don't know what the cost of living would be for sure.
And I'm estimating thirty cents for the part-time people. Uh, it's not really cost of living, it's just increase in the minimum wage. And then we're estimating the positions and the number of hours to come up with the figure that we add to the full-time, um, to come up with this number. But we can definitely look at lowering it. That's what happened last year.
I'm hoping one fifty-seven.
I'm, I'm open for any number, we'll agree to one fifty-seven, okay? Then I'll lower this to twelve. All right, so we shaved off some there. Yeah, but group insurance won't change because it's, uh, that's for full-time employees that have insurance, not part-time. Yeah, group insurance is for health, insurance, dental, and then the other insurance is our property and liability insurance. So I think we've reduced all those that are associated with part-time employment. Professional services, they pay for, um, they pay Toro for monitoring of their irrigation system, that's lovely. Here's their marketing, advertising and marketing budget, uh, JR, they have fifteen thousand. In twenty-nineteen, they spent eighteen and if Jason weren't here, he'd tell you that's because he had some things that were agreed to in his budget that he didn't agree to without updating with our previous city administration, so.
So the, so the plunge had how much?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five, and this one is?
Fifteen. They have less billboards, is the big thing. Jason doesn't really agree with the billboards. And then he also co-ops less advertising businesses.
And he does a trade-off, he has a lot of trade-offs.
Like big deals, trade-off.
Just agree with some.
Yep. So it's like twelve thousand, more than those advertising costs. We have a very small amount for vehicle repairs, very small amount for building repairs, uh, equipment repairs. R and M on all equipment and power tools, he has a thousand five hundred. Uh, irrigation, that's R and M on pipe and fittings, satellite controller and head, a thousand five hundred, just a smaller increase over last year. Twenty-five hundred for pumps, holders and E F D. Supplies, he has a thousand, that's miscellaneous shovel and office supplies. Two hundred for clothing, that's P T E, earplugs, glasses, gloves. Janitorial supplies, a very small amount, three hundred, minor tools.
I have a question.
Yes, you can.
Oh.
Yep.
How many police departments get boots and oil department?
Uh, utilities get boot reimbursement. It's, uh, so does streets, yeah, they get, do they get boot reimbursement or do they just get a clothing?
They get clothing allowance.
Yeah, so they have an allowance. We'll get to their.
But they provide those.
Yeah, they choose what they.
Do these guys need a clothing allowance?
No, this is for P T E. They don't get a clothing allowance. So these are just for earplugs, eyeglasses, gloves.
Well, you know, if some of the Evans Plunge's a good profession, what they're doing, why don't we have a golf course?
These are the course, yeah, these are the course workers and he hasn't asked for that, so.
We used to have T-shirts and hoodies and stuff for safety, but I thought way back when, and it's probably all changed, but we all, we've, we've kind of agreed that the same employees would wear something so they look uniform.
Right, as long as I've been here, they're asking about a clothing budget for the golf course boys.
Well, there was not really a clothing budget, but we agreed upon shirts, I mean, like T-shirts or. I guess I didn't realize we had departments that didn't have kind of a uniform-looking crew.
Do you want to take a note of that, John, and see if you, if Jason is interested in anything like that? Minor tools, a thousand. He has cordless circular saw and backpack blower as his monster. Uh, landscape, fifty dollars. Sand, where I have a note, that is increased and highlighted. It's increased due to the need for higher quality of sand and here's what Jason says about it. Thank you for the opportunity to comment. If we buy sand from Oral at thirty-five dollars a ton, we'll need to change one figure from ten thousand to thirty-two hundred, assuming no increase for twenty-twenty-one. Oral sand is very coarse. If we continue to use it, will continue to have an effect on our playability and our equipment. We've been using it, so we certainly can continue. After talking with the mayor, he wanted me to start looking at calculating the cost for removing the coarse sand ourselves. That's what he has to say about sand, so.
Does the city have their own sand out in the airport?
No.
Not good enough quality for this.
It's just gross.
I can give you a full, like, night of sand over here. Anybody in San, Oral, sand facility? Apparently, our truck will pick up sand. They tell the truck driver to go pick up sand. When he gets there, he tells the people he needs sand. They're presenting it to the wrong pilot. They're charged for top dressing sand that's not coming to the course as top dressing sand. I've got just a blue incident like that, but it's that customer of the other places that had the same issue. So he looked at 10,000 numbers if he buys sand, especially PGA supply out of Alcora.
So he's not requesting the sand, he's actually just-
He's not requesting the right sand?
Well, they're not making the right sand or top dressing is the specific, I gotta say.
It's a finer, it's a very refined.
Or it's the quality control that's going on there. They're not getting the right sand. They're just picking up the bad ones. He's getting the right stuff sometimes with the wrong stuff.
Is that kind of like the gravel thing, apparently?
And the fine sand is actually more playable and it's more true.
Like you said, it's a goal of your studio.
No, the sand that he's talking about is for greens.
Oh.
And for a golf course, the most important component is the green. You want consistency throughout all your greens. And what Jason does is he takes poor samples from all our greens, will mix them together, and then see what consistency of soil he has. Will send it off and have it tested. And that's what you want to maintain, that consistency. And as John explained, it seemed like there's been a miscommunication in what he was expecting to get versus what he's actually loading on the truck. Miss Dave mentioned that Jason said, I had a conversation prior. We found out all these other things that John was talking about is rather than going to Denver to get sand, running sand to Denver, could we make our own? And John was very diplomatic in telling me that, you know, remove my head, but that's not something we want to do.
So you were saying, pack sand?
No.
Well, has anybody talked to Kroll to see if they have the top dressing sand?
No, that's where we're at. For the purposes of here, my conversation with Jason was, can we get through this year and get the problem figured out? And he said yes.
Because my other thing is, we could request Kroll or Pete Lean to run us the sand we want. If they, if they would shut down, and you get several golf courses go together, they will make a special product. So it's just a matter of us talking to them and requesting a special product.
And Jason's already had those conversations with the other courses to say, if you could get the sand over, you know, how much would you be willing to purchase from? So that we can go back to Pete or to Pete Lean's side.
That's who we've been.
Here's the market. But it appears that they do have the sand and all the courses are after.
It's just a matter of telling your truck driver to get the right sand.
Tell him the loader-
Or the loader operator.
The loader operator, get it from that pile versus that pile. Because Jason has sent them the specs for the sand that he wants. And they responded, yes, we can give you that spec. And when it came back and said he looked at it, it was obvious it was not what he was expecting. So again, for the purposes of this budget, he's okay if we get him the $3,500 sand to work through this problem. And if we can work it locally, then next year, say, okay. We've tried, Pete Lean and Suns will make it, we won't be. But we do have the time to have that conversation. And he doesn't need to have a budget this year.
I'm gonna throw one thing out to you real quick. Have you ever played up to Devil's Tower? That white sand they have? That's a unique, a unique course with unique sand up there. And we can get that sand if Jason would like it.
But he mentioned Gillette, that he can get the sand that he wants from Gillette. If we can get a Pete Lean's side, that's the best solution.
Well, should we talk to Kroll? It would be a lot closer to get.
Again, just for whether he can decide now, if you approve at the original level.
3,200 as well.
3,200.
I'm getting by.
He's okay with doing that. It would, it would be through the 2021 budget for today's point. If we try, it just doesn't work, and he's saying, no, I need to get more expensive sand, then we bring that in front of you to decide what he wants to supplementally improve this budget to get.
These are the years, the point it is. I would say give him 3,200 or 3,500 to try.
Drop the amount to 3,200 from 10,000. Fertilizer, 14,000. That includes all liquid and granular corns and fertilizer. Pesticides at 4,000. Plant growth regulator, wetting agents, so you either grow it or don't grow it, stop it, start it. Got a lot of regulating.
If we're looking, I'm sorry, if we're looking to cut those pesticides, it's traditionally staying under-
Heat change, yeah, heat change and add, and they might just have left those in here, fertilizer and pesticides. And so you can't look at the history for those because he changed them, broke them out.
Well, he's only used 3,500 today.
16,000 the year before in total.
Yeah, again, he changed and split those. But if you'd like to lower it, I take an amount.
See if I'm using the full 4,000 this year, that'd be as much as-
As far as I know.
It's like the fall time, the heavier time to do it all, so it'll be more-
This time of year, you get more seeds coming up, options waiting to, the ones you don't want.
Trying to split my opinion is that, would you use more in the latter part of the year than what we normally use today?
I would think you wouldn't apply it until the play is over, but that's just, you know, they even apply it more.
And some of the fertilizer is fertilizer. And herbicides are better applied for him than that.
Would you like to see that lowered by 500 or 1,000, or leave it as it is?
I'd like to see that added on to the flowers. How come we don't have any flowers hanging out anywhere?
Is there a specific, the pro shop has some here flowers.
They do have flowers on their list.
I mean, up and down our main street, like other towns. Well, getting it out of parks.
Am I changing pesticides or leaving it at 4,000?
I'm okay with that, that was just- I would leave it alone, because he knows exactly where you're asking.
But right to that subject, because I'm seeing a trend here that we compare to previous years and say, well, we didn't use that much, so why the question this much this year? I did it, I don't know if it was the right way to do it. But my concern is, when we begin doing that, then we're moving towards a federal government way of managing money, using it. So if we begin looking at it and saying, well, you didn't spend the 500 which you budgeted last year, so you're not getting it this year, they're gonna spend it. And what I've asked them to do as department heads through our department meeting is trust the council to work with you, that if you miss a budget, that's okay. It's gonna come back into the general budget for next year. But don't get to the point that you're in November or December going, ooh, I probably managed my budget well, and I got $2,000 sitting here, and if I don't spend it, the council's gonna do what we often do. You didn't spend it, so you don't need it. Maybe they just manage their budget well. So it's a trust thing.
And I'm not saying that, in being, working for the government, of course, you know, I've been in budget meetings many, many years. But what I, what I don't want to see, when looking at something like this, I personally do not want to see somebody asking for a line item with an item. That traditionally, they're running right about here. And this year, here we are, right here. It's like, when you're doubling the amount that you had used over the past couple of years, something's wrong for all of a sudden for you to ask for double the amount that you've used traditionally. There's something not right in that.
Have some explanation why.
And I'm not saying he's wrong, you know, I understand-
Well, they're playing catch-up because they've been cut so often.
Maybe, but maybe it's something that for these three years, I didn't need to have it there. In this fourth year, I need to increase that amount. So to Wes's point, more explanation why. And I just look at it and say, ooh, this has gone up for what you've historically spent. I just want to caution that that's what you are going to, that's what I encourage them to do. Because I do the same thing. As long as you're not gonna give it to me, I'm gonna find a way to spend. Jason made the good point that with his pesticides, and it applies to the other departments, buying pipe or buying whatever. Maybe at the end of the year, they've got $5,000 sitting there left over. And they know they've got a project coming out next year, so they can save $1,000 on buying pipe. Save $1,000 on buying fertilizer. Why wouldn't we let employees do that? Knowing that next year is not to spend, so I'm glad we're honest. I learned and I want to caution us. Don't be so quick to say, this is your trend, that you've now exceeded that.
But we've been bamboozled before, Bob, trust me.
Well, that's what I said, to us, you know, it was, it's a trust issue.
I know.
You know, that they demonstrate that, okay, if you don't have license for doing it, then we'll be good managers of mine.
Here's something important to know related to these expenses that we're talking about right now. So in 2019, Jason combined insecticide, herbicide, and fungicide all into the pesticide expense quotes. That just happened in 2019. If you're looking at anything prior to that, it didn't have that. We changed 42665 from herbicide to plant growth regulator. So if you're looking at anything prior, it was for a different expense. And we changed 42666 from fungicide to wetting agent. So in 2019, we changed those expense quotes based on his requests. So the budgeting amounts, if you're looking back at history to see how much he spent, what he was using those expense quotes for changed. So there's that also.
I'm not against it at all, anyway.
Good questions.
Something to look at. Something else about this year, we told them to not just spend during COVID crisis quotes, all of what's gonna happen, we just want to be able to call before you spend a dollar.
Gas, oil, and diesel, that's a $500 increase over last year. You never know when gas prices are gonna be down. So we may drop that just a little bit. Science, he dropped. Travel and conference, he goes to golf course superintendent's conference. Telephone, electricity, propane, cell phone, didn't really change any of those. Machinery, he's looking for an aerator, aerator and a fairway sprayer. Here's what he has to say about that $30,000 request. It's requested for those two things. Current, aerators toughed up the greens after use and break down a lot, thus affecting playability and the amount of time it takes to aerate. The fairway sprayer just allows us to spray a larger area faster. Both are important, but not critical. Thank you, Jason, for your common sense approach to it. That's what he has to say about those, so there's $30,000 there.
What's he just there?
Did he give you a breakdown?
We're trying to take the aerator away from him and use it. We're trying to use it. I was asking how myself was.
Call him and find out, can you text him or call him?
Could he spray with the smaller sprayer that they've got going now and give him the aerator?
He says both are important, but not critical.
Yeah, but the aerator, I think you might want more than the sprayer, because you might already have the sprayer. It's just, takes a little longer to do the job, mostly because it's smaller.
Again, getting back to the important part of golf course degrees. When he's talking about puffing, the aerator is, you know, pulling the tines, the teeth, whatever it is, out of green, retracting out green, it's pulling grass. So it's not a smooth surface that golfers are expecting. It ends up being a puffy surface. Of course, really talking about actual playability. My opinion only, I'm conservative, so whatever it is, it's in there. The aerator will be more important. I've got the aerator, but the fairway sprayer, to, to a smaller sprayer, that's gonna increase the amount of time that he's spending off there doing it. But again, golfers like the law, the law factors for the whole course, like all the work together. But it's the green that you want consistent.
So this area, does that make it a little more challenging?
Think you charge them extra for the challenge?
I'd go along with the aerator and drop the sprayer.
We're gonna find out from John what those dollar amounts are.
I don't need it with the challenge. Yeah, I might wander out and go.
I, I, I go for the- In the past, I know there's certain department heads that are real, I mean, they, they're realistic. And I know Jason is one of them. I mean, I-
Do you think we're, anybody have an idea of what those costs that we can maybe do some estimates while we're waiting?
The aerator is a high-dollar piece. The sprayer isn't, you know, it's much of a holiday, it'd just be hard.
So 20 and 10, 25 and 5?
I'd go with 25 and 5.
1,000 and 10,000, I'd vary if you want. I'd get at least 25.
For an aerator, so only take five out of here for the sprayer? Just for, while we're waiting for it, is everybody okay with that, if I put 25 in there? We'll see what he comes back with, but that way we can look forward. That gets our subsidy down from the original estimated 155,710 to 127,160 in the golf course.
What was, what was the overall over budget?
127,160 now is the subsidy that's going to be required. Are we just talking about the golf course? Oh, because some funds have overages, so we didn't have an overall. Because some funds have overages this month, had a venue, so. The golf course would need additional subsidies of 127,160. Do we need another break, or are we ready to go on? Need another break?
Please.
Okay, break time.
You guys will never make long haul truck drivers.
But this is actually-
I would watch.
Happy to take a break.
But when you get my age, bladder matters.
I know, we do-
Alright, so Jason's total budget, we got down to 316,910. He didn't, but we just left it at 25, we're estimating. So projected loss, 127,160 at the golf course.
He gets back to his main slash, we don't have to change it further.
Yep. Solid waste, 612. We talked about the amount that we project to collect is the amount that we project to spend. We have 180,000. You see that in 2019, we had a large amount. I just put in the notes that we paid for the chipping of our brush piles that year, so that was in the budget. We have 2,750. That's an increase over last year, but we have an estimate of 2,500 to repair the perimeter fencing. $500 in supplies and materials, we increased that to repair totes. And then $10,000 transferred to the general fund as well in 2020. We have, yep.
You see totes?
To, garbage totes. No, refuge totes, I think. It's a large fan.
Why do you transfer 10 totes now?
We collect the city fee and we collect the amounts for the charges. And so that is a subsidy to the general government fund, which funds-
Since, since we're in all these budgets and I'm on the supply, I, when I see supplies and materials made for our budgets, it makes me wonder, what are those items that we're buying? Probably like items from just the department. Probably like items from just the department, maybe we can look at, I want to say like, just office. Can we consolidate, you know, like an office supply place? Somebody needs to use, we can get it all, give it for all the departments that they cut around. They need, I need ads, I need ads, I need, no ads, I need copy paper, I need things like that. We consolidate the companies, simply because I may be in a department buying from vendor A and vendor B's cheaper ones, same product, cheaper business. But I like this guy, so I'm going to go get these. We consolidate those, because there are ways I can find out. Maybe I can just on my own research, what we can do to make that better to say, where is money?
Our new mayor, Nelson, has talked to all the department heads about that strategy. We don't have a central location, nor do we have one budget to pay for all those things. But we definitely have the ability to try to compile like purchases to get a better deal and get them on the order. So that is something Bob has asked all the department heads to take a look at. We're starting initially with office supplies, but the goal is to expand that and do that as much as possible.
And one of the reasons I mention that is I think I saw in one of my last budget, it's going to be true, that really not true, that there were different types of hand sanitizers. And these dollar values, I'm sure, way up on this, although everywhere that it looks like. Why are we not using the same vendor or something?
We tried to get them off one vendor and they're so backordered. And we had to reopen and they had to buy some supplies and we got them where we could. But that is a perfect example, it's been all over the place, the cost happened too. I will give Craig a shout out. He talked with me about our propane purchases, which led me to do some investigating and helped me to find some state of South Dakota bid prices for things like office supplies and janitorial supplies. So now we're tied in with innovative and staples. And we get the state bid on some of those larger purchase items, but they're still out of stock for the things that we're all looking for right now.
And now I understand, because of the situation we're in with the COVID right now, everything's going to be hired and it's going to be out of stock. Trying to go right now to Walmart to get some more, you can't get them.
Five places I went to, five places.
But there are things like that that I think I would like to be a part of, again.
Yeah, we'd love to.
Maybe I can help us actually, it's not going to be a lot, I'm positive. Again, when I'm talking about the level of the city, it doesn't matter what the priority, we can take some under the city.
Yep.
That was the last part. I have two of them, one of them is specifically that part, they're all this is about 15,000. Couple weeks ago, when you go through the budget, well, Bill, yeah, it's a concussion. Mary has already agreed at City Hall that she wants to be the one who wants to consolidate those orders. Department heads have started getting that list, office supplies, they have orders, so she can go get it where it's ordered from. A potential limiting factor for us is, of course, the more you buy, the more pressure. But do we have physical space to put everything, depending on, we don't have any work, but how to accommodate?
I'd be fine in place to put that.
Well, we'll get there.
Library.
Not carrying a mallet of paper.
I am.
A mallet maker.
Library said that you take a mallet of paper. Well, there is such a thing too, as, and we've done it with you when I was there, desktop board. And you find your vendor like your enemy. You have certain individuals that can buy from that desktop board. In that, we have a list of items that they're authorized to buy. If they try to buy something outside of that list, it's going to red flag and it's going to be denied. So if they try to do an office chair and we were, just wasn't on that list, they could buy it. They'd have to figure out a different property first. But you can consolidate those small departments. Desktop purchase, reach one of them, authorizes that. Service for chief, department chief, department secretary, whoever the author. Just going to save some money.
I nominate JR to be on the purchasing committee.
So those are great ideas, though, and something that we have been talking about. If you take any help we can provide. In our solid waste fund, we have projected expenses of 193,250. You remember back in the revenue, we have projected revenue of 207,000. So we have projected profit of 13,750. This is one of those reasons we are asking for what our total deficit is. We have funds that have overages. What happens in those funds is those dollars stay dedicated in that fund. So we have another brush pile issue, or we want to buy an air burner or something. These are the funds that we use for that. So it's not, we shouldn't, if we don't have to, we should plan to spend every dollar we have every year. So this is an example of where our revenue seats our expense projections. Any changes or questions to the solid waste fund? All right, we're going to move on then to wastewater, 604 fund. Remember, we talked about revenue in that fund and their expenses not exceeding their revenue. We're projecting a profit of 193,250. In the wastewater fund, something to remember about these utility funds, water and wastewater, is they don't budget for projects, but when they do projects, they cost a lot of money. So any little bit you can put back into their unrestricted that position, that's what they use for the big projects that they do. In the wastewater fund, we have projected salaries and wages. Now that we're out of the departments with the part-time employees, this is a very good estimate using actual data for full-time employees projecting salaries and wages. Payroll taxes, retirement, workers' comp, no benefits changes in any of these. They suffered to say that package that the corporate side increases that we all did. Unemployment, our insurance, South Dakota Public Insurance Alliance. Professional services, they pay for standard testing and engineering services. Rentals, they may need a rent generator for lift station. Vehicle repairs, they may not need it all, but again, we're not looking to highlight expenses in this budget. It's been all over the place in the past few years. Building repairs, sewer line repair and floor repairs, they have targeted for this year. Equipment repairs, sewer water repairs, a secondary clarifier repair is listed in there. Supplies of 400, clothing, they have a $200 boot reimbursement, tends to an employee. They share an employee with water. Janitorial supplies, minor tools, probably should be a little higher. It looks like it consistently over that amount. But this is what Tracy asked for. Purification chemicals, in 2019, that increased significantly because they added polymer for their new sludge de-watering device. Gas, oil, and diesel, travel and conference, they have certifications. They do telephone, electricity, propane, they heat up their sludge. Cell phone, reimbursement for employees, 40% of the engineer phone. We do have data balling fund loan in our wastewater fund. We have 57,000 principal contract loss for this year. And then we have a transfer out of 125,000 in the CO1 fund. We're in a total of 55900 in the wastewater. Any questions or comments on that one? These are the easy ones. Yeah, it's easy when they make money. Stations are much easier. We'll move on to the water fund, also utilities fund and not receives. You remember, water fund, the projected revenue of 874,150. Right now, with the budget that you're looking at, we have projected profit of 66043. The numbers I'm going to talk about are different than the numbers on your worksheet because of the full-time position that we talked about that we added from the time that we printed all these budget notes. We are requesting a full-time office employee to share with finance, water, and development coordinator. Bob asked me to put it in the budget this morning. The estimates, the estimated expense in total is $38,665. One-third of that would be to the finance office, one-third would be to development coordinator, and one-third would be to water. This is the first expense that we're reviewing where you see that addition. So I have highlighted the first six where I add in those amounts, or one-third of those amounts for that new administrative assistant. One-third of the salaries and wages is 8,000, one-third of, one-third of payroll taxes is 610,480 for the retirement. 42 for the workers' comp, nothing at, oh, we have 11, 3750, it's 11 total. 3750 added for the insurance and 25 added to unemployment for that position. Be a good time to have a conversation regarding the position, the request to add it, if we'd like, because two-thirds of that is going to come to the general fund, that we'll get to later.
And that person is needed to call us.
Yes, so if we, there's added responsibilities for the development coordinator. And he has had difficulty covering his tasks and doing the administrative work for his position. The finance office has had the same number of employees since before we bought the pro shop or before we bought the punch. So there are added responsibilities in the finance office that have never resulted in an added employee. And then the water department, Barb is the only utility billing clerk. Mary offers her assistance, but Barb is going to be retiring someday. And even our utilities accounts in the world. So we've done improvements for water distribution and added new accounts, and we still have that same company. So that's the justification for the position. We didn't add it in the budget initially because we understand that that added expense is not something the general fund can withstand this year. But the importance of the position and the added responsibilities is apparently something Bob felt that was at least important to add into the budget and have a conversation tonight.
I disagree.
May I ask, could the development?
City Hall's had four employees ever since I came up there. And I can't understand, the city's smaller. And they had the golf course and pro shop for years before the plunge, and even after the plunge. And they've never even asked for part-time help. So it's just kind of funny, all of a sudden, with less, less people living.
I wouldn't say less, our payroll more than doubled when we bought the punch and the pro shop. So there might be less people living in the city, but the functions that are related to the new...
The pro shop, we've had pro shop for years.
20, what year?
Pro shop?
Right, it's still added, and you have the same number of employees. So regardless of the year you bought it. And I did ask for this position last year too, and so it's not great.
I disagree.
I would want, I just wonder who the development coordinator person is.
Scott Zoe. It's our building inspector, we've called it planning administrator, we've called it building inspector.
And he needs help, why?
So it's not all of a sudden, it's all of a sudden smart, I asked Mr. today. Since I've been involved with the city, I recognize what the city administrators are doing, what the finances are doing. And I understand I'm not going to convince folks who don't think it's necessary, so I'm trying. I'm just going to share why I ask and have it. When I see the work that the city administrator does, and this team in particular, in the finance office, it is significantly more than what I think most of the positions are likely to be doing. They need administrative help to do what they're doing. Scott's position, you know, being by restricted building inspector. And it got applied as a building inspector and development coordinator, so there are some additional responsibilities.
Well, I'm still confused, what development coordinator, what, what does the development coordinator do?
Help me develop the growth of the city.
That's called, that's called the chamber commerce.
So, and looking at what the folks do, you've seen an increase in revenue from building programs. So his work is going up through public safety, through public safety and public works. And historic preservation is now putting, rightfully so, more pressure on COVID folks. So that's additional responsibility on what used to be a single position, but now has combined responsibilities. So all I can tell you is, from what I've seen over the last four years, when we look at how we're going to utilize the finance officer and the city administrator, do we want them doing administrative system work? Or do we want them doing the work that's commensurate with responsibilities that we expect them to do? As Misty said, it's not just those positions, it's being able to help the ladies out front from the desk. There are times when neither Misty or Barb are running from the back room and answer all of the Misty's work there and going from the back room to answer calls up front because the staff is there.
We're not complaining about that.
I was, but, but when people show up at City Hall and there's a woman in the front desk, they're standing there wondering who's going to come. So I understand, but for some people, it's funny, it's ridiculous. Just presenting to you why the position is necessary, why I ask Mr. to add it for your consideration.
What are the... Mr. Well, we need to know.
Is there plenty of facility for an extra person over there?
Misty has said yes, there is.
We have that third desk.
Space available out.
That is the Sam's computer, there's a chair there, nobody sits there. I was, I will, just to help answer your question, because development coordinator is a new name. You don't remember its same position, though. The summary description, they perform a variety of technical duties related to ensuring compliance with building zoning and property maintenance ordinances and regulations for the city. We service the city's liaisons, planning and zoning commission. Service the building official and building inspector. Service the compliance officer and assist the city administrator with many products.
Now, I've heard of the justification for any of that, but we do, we understand the totals are different. But we've never done that before, never been there before. We're never going to, we're never going to ask. The way we look at it is, well, that's the way we did it 20 years ago, so that's the way we're going to do it now.
I just know government grows on itself. That's one thing I've learned.
I... So this is simply what the finance office, or how the course, slash, building, also a help to Barb and Mark.
Mary's finance office, Barb is utility billing clerk. So the idea is that if we just...
Be sure, be trying to help each other, so they're very helpful.
That's it. So do we even have any idea when Barb is even considering retiring?
Well, probably Mary before Barb, but both of them within the next five, seven years.
That's a long way down the road then.
You're right. And I didn't put it in there because I see the need. Bob asked me this morning, why haven't you? Because he remembers I've requested this before, mentioned it as a need before. And I, if I can't find the way to pay for it, I'm not going to ask for it. But there are other people who are being affected by this that need it too. So that's why we decided to put it in here, but it's up to you whether it comes out or...
Being fiscally responsible, I could, I just have to say no, right?
Will the person already be trained in this position or will they be trained as they go?
We've hired an 80% top of scale, which is our policy for an administrative assistant, that they train as they go. We don't have anybody in mind for the position. We haven't turned it over yet. Wes, I could agree that if this isn't something that gets budgeted this year, you're going to hear this request again next year. But things are different this year, and we're not in a great place right now.
Nobody is, everybody's having to suck it up this year. I mean...
So is this the cut or do we want more conversation regarding it? Happy to go either way.
Well, you know, I...
Got it. One-third from water and two-thirds from the general fund, but it'd be between the finance and the development coordinator budgets. So the water can afford it, the other two, the two-thirds of it, we have to fund.
How much would this improve Scott's effectiveness scaling their builders and permits and...
I have no idea. Mary does provide assistance to him currently. She's an administrative assistant, so...
Is she keeping up with it?
Uh, well, it's not all her job, so she helps him. Is he keeping up with it? He's not here to answer my question, but maybe John, is he supervisor of this?
Might help push the paperwork through, but I think somebody's pushing the paperwork through, doesn't spend his time, you won't have, they're looking, the things, that problems that will bring to his attention. So we just want to give the paperwork in there and I think that was the purpose of the administrative assistant, we can help, you know, from that, getting certified letters that long time, get a little more developed.
In the back, Mary, can Mary keep up with that?
She's doing, I mean, I don't think there's any complaints with the assistance she's currently providing.
And we're, I'm asking you to involve the board, to roll some of the work that the partners themselves are doing, to be able to order, to free up their time to focus on their jobs rather than ordering supplies. I'm asking you to give that effort, uh, and to John's point as far as the administrative department, because rightfully so, public works, public safety, historic preservation is going to be wanting to see a lot more citations, if that's the right word, in the uh, the coordinator's office, Scott's office. Do we want him out there identifying those properties or do we want him out and then handing that citation off to somebody who's actually going through paperwork, sending it to the property owner and those kinds of things? Or do we want Scott's time split between doing the routine mundane work of getting the notices out or do we want him out there identifying maybe two or three more properties a day rather than doing the administrative work associated with it?
How many buildings are we going to plow right now, like?
Building permits, we're pushing twenty-five now.
That's being built right now.
Right, at some stage, but I'm bringing it out.
And that don't include the state-owned, the third state.
How many were on that list of businesses today?
I don't have, I don't have a problem with this at all. I know what I feel like tonight, I don't have a staff anymore. I worked alone for four years straight, no staff. I worked for, for four years, no staff. I retired, then I were five. And I took us to number one in the nation with no staff. So, but I worked, I thought off there, I owned mine, it was no fun, it was on, always doing, day, day, nights and weekends, I didn't, I couldn't really, I had to stand on top of three man teams, no, it's like, I had no problem, they wanted to stand up.
And correct to your question about knowing the building, because we're being told, we're being told, probably I'm not one of the perfect standards, but both you and Dave, we know that there's one particular robbery that's kicking his ass. That one company has probably taken fifteen to twenty percent of his time. I have a great, a lot to do right now about us, but if that's what he's been dealing with, to, to have the city in a good position, uh, to depend on his, his decision.
Do you realize the city spearfish builds on the, uh, average of about probably a hundred or some houses a year and that man probably does it by himself.
So I'm, I'm going to keep going through water, this'll be an added discussion because we need to cut from the general fund, so if it's okay with all of you for now, I'm going to leave it in water, we're going to go through the rest of water and we'll revisit this Thursday night when we get to the general fund, we really will have to make some cuts and we can take it out of here at that time if that's the decision we made, if you're all okay with that.
I feel long with part time.
I'm just going to leave it in there now because I don't have part time figured, but maybe by Thursday I'll make myself known to calculate, um, a part time position also. All right, so the rest of water, they have insurance that they pay to our insurance, property and liability, they have thirty-five thousand in professional services, which is their merchant processing fees, qualified three-store, which sends out their bills, the meter reader gets paid out of here, one-call testing and tank cleaning, all get paid out there. Publishing, they have to publish their annual water, drinking water report.
Misty, why is, why is publishing sulfide year-to-date versus past years and so forth?
That's a great question, I think they had to publish something and let's just look fast, why I wanted people to access this.
I know it's not a huge amount, but.
Yeah, I think they have some publishing related to.
Water grant.
I, I feel like it was the, uh, just water distribution, but I just don't know for sure, you know, we won't have to guess. Yeah, but year-to-date it's three-seventy-six and he was just asking what it was. Um, they had a notice that they had to have published this year, D E in our affidavit water rights program, uh, looks like it was something that they paid for from 2019, but it didn't get submitted until after our, uh, accrual period, so it was billed to 2020. That was related to affidavit water rights program. Vehicle repairs, they have twenty-five hundred, three hundred for building repairs, um, nine thousand for equipment repairs, pumps and miscellaneous equipment.
Go back to vehicle repair?
Yep.
Again, go back to last. Two thousand nineteen, they spent nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars, year-to-date they spent eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Why do we have twenty-five hundred dollars, is this a case of break?
That's the amount Tracy asked for, you don't, you request cuts when they have enough.
Two thousand eighteen, maybe fifty-six.
Which was probably an anomaly because I think historically it's not quite that high, but twenty-five hundred is kind of in the middle. We can lower it, but they don't need to lower their estimated expenses, so. It's a good question. Uh, it says that equipment repairs, uh, street walk repairs, five hundred, sewer water repairs, thirty-eight thousand. Again, they don't budget for big projects, um, just estimate repairs that they, you know, are anticipating, but not big projects. They have stomach supplies, they have clothing, which includes their food allowance, janitorial supplies, minor tools, things like saws, valve keys, blades, batteries, et cetera, purification chemicals, gas oil and diesel, traveling conference, telephone, um. Is this four hundred in here because they're anticipating adding, there's a note in here in the future, may add monitoring system from TEMTEC, uh, and need a phone line, but John, do you know if that's? Electricity, fifty thousand, cell phone, thirteen twenty-five, sixty thousand in improvements other than buildings, I think this has been discussed at Public Works, they're estimating four hundred meters being replaced at a hundred and fifty dollars each. They hope to do that each year for the next couple of years as part of our radio reading meter conversion project and then eventually they want to get towers that would eliminate the need for a meter reader and give us instant access to readings.
This is sixty thousand for that?
It's for four hundred meters at one fifty, they budget that for the next couple of years.
What will you do this year?
We talked about doing a hundred, just so I can figure out, should I get start to a hundred this year?
They want to focus on the meter business that we're getting covered.
So this is for four hundred meters next year.
And then, um, we, we have talked about, and I talked with Tracy about this, my reaction was, we talked about adding a hundred here, uh, until we call out. I thought it'd be a good point to say it was budgeted at a hundred and why take six, seven, eight years to get there, when you can get there in three years?
Four hundred would love to be managed.
They also have a state Robin Fund loan, um, and let's see, it's twenty-eleven Albany Avenue Water Main replacement, Detroit Avenue Water Main and Sixth Street Water Main, they may pay us on those, and then they also have a subsidy to the general fund. With that position added in there, they still have, uh, net income of sixty-six thousand and if I take that amount out, it would increase that by twelve-nine. Any changes besides the one that we're putting off for later conversation to the water department? Okay, if we can get through five oh one and two one three and then call it a night.
Can I ask a quick question on machinery and equipment?
In the water fund?
Yes.
Yes, nice.
They have been spending money in years past and they've got nothing budgeted for two thousand twenty-one?
Those are some of his capital improvement projects, so he'll come to Public Works and then to Admin Finance and ask us to appropriate for projects that he knows he needs done and then we'll appropriate throughout the year, but he doesn't do that during his budgeting for the main.
But they have thirty-five thousand budgeted for two thousand twenty?
Yeah, I can pull that up and tell you what project they had planned for that.
Okay.
But he didn't have any for twenty twenty-one, then he wanted us to.
Okay.
And year-to-date, can anyone tell me where we're at on that thirty-five?
Twenty-nine oh fifty-six.
Has been spent, I'll tell you what is.
I know last year we talked about that project, three, three, four, a lot of materials, but they didn't get the project. That's right. How's the date? A hundred something? I think it's twenty-six for required, didn't it?
Twenty twenty Chevy, twenty-five hundred four-wheel drive, they funded it for a new truck. That's what the twenty-nine oh fifty-six was for.
Wait a minute, what, what was it? Twenty-five hundred?
Uh, twenty twenty Chevy, twenty-five hundred four-wheel drive pickup.
Why do they need such a heavy pickup?
Uh, there was a reason, I can't remember, something about pulling something. Yeah, pulling, they also can pull something, so I don't remember exactly, but there was a reason.
As long as there's, because, yeah, because I see these guys buy decent pickups when they can use a half-ton, just because they're using the city's money, that's, that's what I wanted to clarify there.
They had some justification for why they were there for the last year and that answered your question about what was purchased this year. It's a great question though. So we've got two to go and then we'll call it a night. And these are easy, five oh one capital improvement fund, uh, adding equity expense, revenue codes for suspended sidewalk, but not putting any money in there for right now, so it has not been budgeted in that fund. Um, the splash park was canceled and we paid out all the funds we held for that to be person interested in and she dispersed it different places in two thousand seven, light of her townhouse like a dollar and had haven't done anything for the last several years. I think they're building up for something, but I'm not sure. Park Pavilion, we paid out all the money we had collected for that in two thousand eighteen to build the covered stage at Centennial Park and then you, uh, just recently, you know, in the next meeting, you'll approve the transfer for the baseball T-ball improvements and you did, uh, through a supplemental appropriation for the improvements they did this year, they put a new scoreboard in the softball field. So what, what that, baseball T-ball improvements is funded by, we have instructors and assistants in baseball and T-ball in our recreation program that instead of taking payment for their salaries and wages, donate their hourly rate for the hours that they work for the program to this fund, so they're paying for it, it's their money and then we use that money for improvements that they deem necessary for baseball. Wes?
My math isn't so good, but there was ninety-three thousand dollars budgeted. Year-to-date, we're going to use thirty-one, correct?
Well, I think you're on the two one three. Yeah.
Oh, I am, yeah, I am, I am, sorry, sorry.
So we'll get to that one.
So I was going to say you got kind of a surplus going on here.
No, uh, we're still.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. Yeah.
On our shoes, you have suspended sidewalk.
What created it in the fund, I just didn't put it in here yet and we haven't put in money. What, I just got this week, four hundred and thirty-three thousand from the state, our first request for draw, and then you gave me permission at the last meeting to request all of it, so I have put four hundred and thirty-three thousand in the revenue code for that and we now have it in the treasury account, I'm waiting for the rest of it, but I don't have it budgeted for twenty twenty-one. And the hope is that we get it all in and spend it all in one year, but we all know that's not what's going to happen, so. All right, uh, this is our business improvement district, the two one three fund, the last one we talked about tonight. You remember we had ninety thousand, one hundred dollars in projected revenue for twenty twenty-one and that's how much we have for projected expenses. One-third of the chamber social media position is paid from this fund, is ten thousand, uh, they have other professional services and fees that they may pay in addition to that for the extra five hundred. Publishing, seventy-two thousand, their primary publisher is Lawrence and Schiller, um, they receive matching forty thousand dollars from the state department of tourism with that vendor, so their forty thousand for Lawrence and Schiller automatically turns into eighty thousand and then there's other advertising publishing pieces in there. Traveling conference, they go to the Rocky Mountain, Rocky Mountain Mash Invitational or something every year, if that's, that's for. And then improvements other than buildings, that's just dependent on what the big improvement board decides, but they did add additional five thousand dollars to support fireworks last year and we're hoping that they do that again this year.
And before we move on from the bid board, it sounds like there's an aggregate to, uh, request for sixty-five thousand dollars to, uh, clean up along the flood channel and that request came about from meeting of me and Dad, John, Craig, David, Tracy was there with Dave Batcher. We got on to Dave Batcher because a lot of them had shared some, um, diagrams that, uh, were drawn up when Mayor Threes was in office and asked for people to get together and come up with a plan for the flood channel. Uh, so because we have a problem with flood channel, we've got the James Bridge coming out, we've got to split the sidewalk the way in, uh, that was a great opportunity to address what happened to that flood channel. And it's a great time now for the public and for you folks, if you haven't taken a look at all the cattails that came out as part of Peet's third construction, needing to get access to the bridge, see what's possible for getting those, uh, those cattails out. So after the meeting, uh, we had kept around putting some money into, uh, not only paying the cattails out of the flood channel, but beginning to do some work, um, maintenance and repair along the wall itself. Corps of Engineers is going to be coming in August to do inspection of the channel and the city has done literally nothing, uh, of items that were identified by the corps. We have a great opportunity in front of us to begin showing something, um, so there's sixty-five thousand to consider, uh, because of that conversation we had today, I talked with, um, Molly with the bid board and asked him if they could free up some money to put towards cleaning up the, uh, river channel. Uh, he wasn't able to commit to anything prior to tonight, but he said he certainly agreed and advocated on our behalf to try to get something else put in there. Uh, John, you said you've got forty-five. John, you said we've got forty-five now, forty, yeah, I'll be proud to do what you have. You know, for, I believe the next few years, we should demonstrate that we're taking ownership of the, of the channel, and that there'd be nothing, and I'd be more embarrassed to have the governor out to cut through on our new sidewalk and our new road and have her look over and see that there's nothing happening in the channel. Even if it's not finished, at least we can say we're taking ownership, we're doing what we can to try to get this going. When we're talking about the bid board, I just want to mention, I have talked to Wally, see if he can free up some, in addition to the five thousand.
Who's Wally?
Wally Kutchman.
Oh.
Okay, he's off, he's off the bid board.
Oh, okay.
I just want to.
Who's David President of the bid board? Or use.
And so some of you that don't know the background, for twenty-eight years, the same list that we have this year, a request from Corps of Engineers is the same one that we had twenty-eight years ago. And literally, the city has never done one thing as far as maintenance on that list. The biggest thing was, the Corps of Engineers, when we did the last inspection, we dealt with them and, and fire in the past. And I was told in the past that if we did something, that we would be open, doors were open for us to help with particular grants, funding, and stuff like that for improvement for our river system. But the thing is, is I think what it is, it comes down to them actually saying, yes, this community is proceeding with repairs and maintenance that need to be done, and then those benefactors actually will come and seek you out. With this whole highway project, the suspended sidewalk, the new bridge on Jennings, this is the most opportune time for us to take a glance at. We have manipulated pretty much, as much as we could with this program to get approaches put into the river so we could actually make investment that would be under the expense of those that are doing the jobs as of now and afterward. So we can actually show Corps of Engineers that we have set ourselves off with a program for maintenance, upkeep, and improvement. I do believe that they would move ahead and help us with some of the, because we, we need some direction too, and they deal with it all the time. What do we need in order to keep the river away the way we'd like it to have? What do we use and how do we fit in the Corps of Engineers program as far as maintenance and the chemicals, anything that's going to be needed for application for the maintenance portion of this, they can give us direction.
Yeah, there's a subject matter.
Yeah, and, and we have to meet their criteria, sure. So with all of this going on at one time, it does open up some benefits for us, but we need to actually finally step up and do something on our own. And it comes down to the same thing as we've been told in other departments, and if you don't take care of yourself, why do you come and be asking to take care of it? And so we have to actually show that we are going to do something and have progress. So this is why we're kind of looking at going this route.
That being said, see you guys Thursday night.
And with, with the board being here late August, we have a perfect opportunity, John's working to create, get the rock out of the channel. So I need a little available to have a straight path.
And the rock, like, back to town?
Yep. We've got one available, and if their budget, we can show the board that council has said yes, this is important, because now state's money decides, state's, they can put us in a great position for.
We're going to talk about budget requests and then expenses in two one two, two one one, and one oh one. Wes, stop by City Hall tomorrow, so I'd like to make sure you get your budget request copy. I looked in the folders today before I left, thinking maybe if I had grabbed it, I'd bring it, and I didn't see it, but it's, but it's still there now, I looked at what happened, and it's not only the copies mine, so you'll have access to that. Thank you all so much for the excellent conversation and discussion. Thank you, Bob, for bringing this back. We made it quite a bit farther than I thought we would this first night, and I appreciate all your excellent questions and answers.
Solid leadership.
Craig, you.
I mean it.